Yeah, okay. She's sick. Yeah, she's sick. Amanda's sick, so she's not here tonight.
All right, so everybody ready?
I got five.
All right. Scene, it's five o'clock. I will call the village board meeting to order for Monday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Candy, roll please.
Bilow.
Here.
Glush.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
And Van Campin.
Here.
And Vashen Peterson in one shirt. All excuses.
Okay, we're gonna change the agenda a little bit. Everybody's agreed, we're gonna go to number six and take care of the consent agenda. And that will be six A through F. On the consent agenda. If somebody wants to make a motion a second, I see Derek and then Jenna. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Posed? All right, folks from Ziggy's, we just approved you, so you're done.
You're done.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Yeah. Love that consent agenda, yeah. All right, let's go back up to three, which is approval of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two village board meeting minutes. I'll take a motion a second.
Approve.
Phil?
Second.
All right, Derek, any discussion on that, from anybody? See none, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed? Thank you. Four is public appearances, comments, communications. Four A is, we're going to have a presentation from the Oregon Youth Center on current activities. So if you wanna come up and introduce yourself at the table.
Hello, I'm Isabel. Hope is not here today because she's sick. As I can see, maybe a lot of people are right now. Um, yeah, so it's just me, that's okay. Um, I'm the administrator for the Oregon Youth Center. I'm, Hope is kind of my other half of the old director position, so I do the office stuff, fundraising, the reporting, et cetera. She does most of the youth programming, hanging out with the kids. Obviously, we help each other out a lot. Um, go to the next slide, you can see a picture of her and of our high school assistant who we hired for the summer, um, and who we've kept on a couple days a week, um, for the school year. And to cover in situations like this week when Hope is home with a kid with COVID. Um, so, yeah. Uh, this is kind of a little mini tour of our space, if you haven't been inside. Um, we've kind of got three or four main areas. There's a back room, you can see behind the basketball court there, it's like a little quiet space. There's the big basketball court, sports area, um, game area with pool, uh, oops, ping pong, um, foosball, lots of board games, and then big front living room type areas for games. And, you know, obviously, we have like a million arts and crafts supplies on a cart. Um, and I'll show the kitchen later. Uh, our main programs that we're doing right now and have done over the summer are, we have arts and crafts projects on every Tuesday. We alternate between STEM activities, like that little volcano orange in the top right, um, and cooking club on Wednesdays every other week. Uh, and then on Thursdays, Kelly from the library comes in, runs different programs, like we have had trivia and, um, crafts and book reading, there's a, you know, huge variety there. Um, and then over the summer, we go to the pool once or twice a week, depending on interest. Um, and we have, you know, special events once a month, every other month, like a little, like a movie night or a party or a holiday themed cookie decorating, depends on the time of year. Um, it, uh, yeah, we had, you know, Halloween, winter holidays, Valentine's Day last year. Um, yeah, and Hope isn't here, and she knows a little bit more about this part, so I'm gonna move on kind of quickly. We partner with, oops, I'm sorry. We partner with a lot of different community organizations, both with further programming. Uh, we've worked with Girl Scouts in the past, we do a lot with the library, um, obviously with the pool. Um, and they help us out, you know, bringing in different kinds of programming. We also bring in, you know, local artists sometimes to do things. Desiree Mayo has come in a couple times this year and last year. Um, we're gonna bring in like somebody to do a mindfulness workshop soon, I think. Um, and sometimes they volunteer their time, and sometimes we're able to pay them. Um, we also work really closely with the food pantry, they have like a shelf for us, and we got like half of our snacks from them. Um, and get meals from Little John's for the kids, and then the rest of them come from, you know, family donations most of the time. Um, and then we work with the school district to get high school volunteers, um, to both hang out with the kids and occasionally do tutoring, although sometimes it's hard to get the kids to want to do their homework after school, and there's so many other more fun options. Um, and we're working on expanding that a little bit now that school's back in session again. Um, and we've been trying to work with Oregon Cares to, um, like, in collaboration, provide, you know, healthy activities for the kids that are, you know, getting to the age where they're getting bored and adventurous. Um, and, yeah, and then a lot of these places will also like provide free rentals to, to use the space for meetings. Um, and we also rent to community members for pretty low and affordable rate for birthday parties and stuff. So it's a really good asset in that way for the community, because it's a really versatile space. Um, okay, next. This is some data. Um, we have served more than two hundred different youth over the course of the last year. Um, the average daily attendance during the school year was fifteen and a half, but that, both of these numbers for the school year and the summer kind of started lower and ended a lot higher over the year. So, um, by the end of the school year, it was closer to twenty. Um, we have just statistics on like who our participants are. Um, those gender numbers are a little bit different between the graph and the bullet point, because the graph is from a smaller sample. Um, and the bullet point is just from everybody, and it's a little unbalanced, and I'm not really sure why. Um, but, and then for the, you know, racial demographics, it's a, I would, you know, it's diverse, um, for Oregon. Um, it's definitely a place where youth of color can be and be around people who are also youth of color, more so than, you know, in, in the rest of the school district, and we're definitely proud of that. Um, and then the, the last graph on the bottom right there is just the percentage of youth who live here in the Village of Oregon. It's about seventy percent, again, that's a, a sample of our youth, so maybe around forty, um, out of those two hundred. So it might not be perfect, but it's pretty close. And then the rest of them come from elsewhere in the school district, kind of a variety of Brooklyn and Rettland and Pittsburgh, et cetera. Um, okay, that's it. And then these are just a few of our goals for this year. Um, one of them is, of course, trying to finish our, our kitchen hood project, which we've been working on since the building got built. Uh, we're trying to get a fully functional kitchen, we're not currently able to have a stove. Um, so our cooking club is creative, we, um, use the air fryer and the pizza oven and the microwave, um, to the utmost, um, of their capabilities. And it's a lot of fun, but we would love to be able to do more complex stuff and, and teach those skills better. Um, and we're like getting there slowly in terms of financing that. Um, maybe like two thirds of the way there now. And then we want to, like I said, expand that tutoring program and also work on getting kids who have aged out to come back as mentors and run like smaller activities. So kids who, who wanted to keep coming when they finished ninth grade, which is our age cap, um, to come back, you know, once or twice a week and lead an activity for the younger kids. Like, we have someone who used to come and play basketball every single day, um, who can't come as a participant anymore, but we'd love to have him run basketball for the younger kids. Um, and then expanding opportunities for community service for the youth who are attending. So we've been making these blankets for the humane society, we wanna do more like park cleanup, um, type activities and make, you know, a leadership group among them to help plan our parties and help plan activities for their peers. Um, and I think that that is the end. Any questions?
Anybody questions or comments?
Um, I didn't realize all that you all have done, I've gone to some events at the youth center, but, um, thank you for providing that, that view. It's been exciting.
It's, yeah, obviously, a lot of this is new since pandemic, so, yeah. It's changed a lot this year.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
Yeah, having had, having have, since I have older kids, mine came through the youth center a while ago, and I very much appreciate all the work that you folks do down there and providing that space. Um, I do have a question for you. Uh, on the, one of the slides had a kitchen hood pro- project close to completion, what are you needing on that?
Um, funding. So it's, it's really expensive, and I'm not the person to ask why. But it's, I assume partially because our ceilings are like forty feet high, and we need like a, you know, a hood that goes all the way up to the ceiling, like a commercial level one, um, to have a stove and pass the fire code. And for some reason, it wasn't built that way. And I, I also wasn't there for that. Um, uh, so it costs like thirty thousand dollars now to do that, and we have like almost twenty. And we're working on it. Like, we set aside, I think, like seven thousand dollars last year from our just budget, but, um, yeah. I just tried it again.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming and giving us, us an update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Happy to be here.
All right, next up, Tom, presentation from OCA Media on current activities and the twenty twenty-three budget request.
I don't, you wanna start, Martin, or?
Yeah, I can just do a little bit. So Tom and Paul are here from OCA Media. Um, so they're here to talk about their twenty twenty-three budget request. Um, they usually come about this time of year to talk about things that they've been up to and things that they're planning and, uh, explain their, their budget requests for the upcoming year. Um, so typically, uh, the village funds the OCA Media contribution through cable franchise fees and state aids. Um, and so they're gonna talk a little bit about that.
Okay, thanks. Um, we have a brief video that is just about a minute and a half long, and it has some statistics and some accomplishments in it. As you watch that video, I, I think the, the big emphasis I would take when I watched that video for the first time was the, to understand that those were all our YouTube viewership statistics, those are, that's our streaming services. Um, it doesn't include any viewership we have through the cable channels, uh, ten nineteen, ten twenty, nine eighty-three, nine eighty-four. Um, we don't, we don't have any statistics for that, we never know if anybody's watching on, on those cable channels or not. Uh, just because there's no way to get any feedback from a broadcast like that. But it still represents, um, what we think is a growing viewership that we've experienced in this community of, of the content that we're providing. We're very proud of the content that Paul and his, and the crews, um, are putting together. It's a very high level of quality. Um, you saw mentioned in there are a couple of awards that we won this year, it's, it's a very high level, uh, program. Um, in your packet, I believe you have a, a sheet on a budget proposal. If you look, there's a twenty twenty-two budget, that was what we, what was funded last year and what we used to fund last year. And the twenty twenty-two projected, that was, uh, we went through our finances in the middle of the year, uh, just before we started meeting with, with, uh, Martin in preparation for this meeting, uh, and kind of looked for where are we gonna be at from the year. And you can see there's a substantial change in that budget, on where we were, uh, where we felt we were last year at this time to where we're at now this time. You'll notice that there's a, a quite a growth, both in revenue and expenses, and of course, they, they both go together. Um, one thing we, we, we find it is that as we will try to do more and more work, and it takes more and more staff, it's more and more hours, and so that's where you see the big jumps in the numbers and so forth. That revenue this year was made up largely through, through donations and production work. Um, if you look, there's a, uh, I think in the projected last year, the budget last year, we had about twelve thousand dollars in funding coming from outside sources, uh, from donations and underwriting and production work. And we actually got, we're right now expecting that this year to be over twenty-three thousand. So there's a, there's a big jump, and that's where we're making up that, that big gain on the revenue for this year. The projected for next year, we're looking for that, we're just like everybody else, our costs are rising, uh, from salaries, from hours and all of those kinds of things. Um, that's why there's a seven percent funding request. I would mention that there's also, you'll note that there was an item in there that we were reserving in the past to provide, uh, to set aside so that we would eventually be able to buy closed captioning equipment. What we found out is we have that capability now, um, with through YouTube. Uh, you can actually go to YouTube, and there's a CC button, you click on that, and it's actually, I've, I've watched it, I actually use that at home a lot of times, it's, it's, just gives a lot more clarity of what's going on. Um, and it's actually pretty good, and it does a nice job of capturing what's going on. And it's on right now, so people at home could be watching this with closed captioning if they have, are hearing impaired or find that as an easier way to listen. I'm really proud of the work that Paul does, I, and, and all of the staff, Josiah, Frank, Dan, um, Jordan. Who am I leaving out? But they're all, they're, they do great work, and I think that it makes a real difference. And when you look at the numbers, uh, when you think, you know, you think about a normal community, uh, how many people actually pay attention to what's going on at a village board meeting? Um, you'd say, well, you know, we have, have one or two people here who are reviewing. But then we have, Village of Oregon typically has a hundred and fifty-two hundred people who watch those broadcasts. That's just on YouTube, we're not even covering who's, who's watching on cable. So this is a community that's very involved, they're very engaged, they want to know what's going on, and they appreciate all the things that, uh, you guys are doing, and they wanna understand that and know it. Same time, we have work to do, we know that people, there's still people who don't always get all the messages that we'd like to have them get. Um, and we're, we're very eager to try to find that and fill that gap and get that information to them.
Just briefly, um, we've come a long way in a few years. Um, our, some of the numbers that showed up on you, on that little promo shows the jumps in the numbers we've gotten on YouTube. We're at over two thousand now of subscribers. That usually will increase, it's been increasing dramatically lately. Um, we're becoming more, more well-known, um, people are starting to trust that we will be there when we say we're streaming a whatever, a game or a board meeting. And, um, our equipment is proving that it's worth the value that we're spending, and we are purchasing professional platforms on which to stream, um, professional equipment. Luckily, the, uh, cameras that we've had for four or five years now are still operable and looking good. I haven't had any big incidents with any of them, like, they do go out with high school staffers, and, um, they get well-used. Um, we are due to increase, to do some more purchasing as we move forward and, uh, keep cycling them in, just like we cycle in computers in order to keep editing. We have done a lot, uh, in this community. I'm proud of my staff, we're a very small staff, we're only four part-timers doing this, and about three, well, two high schoolers and one person who's now in, uh, she graduated high school and she still works with us. Uh, she's at Madison College. We're still trying to get some, uh, more high school students in, because we did about three hundred events last night in this community, last year in this community. Um, that's a lot for a little tiny, uh, community access TV station. And a lot of those were livestreamed. Um, we are backing off on some of our, I guess I call it COVID production that we streamed for the school, because they didn't want people in the audiences at fourth grade concerts and the like, so we covered that for them. We have to back off on that, it's, it took a toll on, uh, staffing, it took a toll on our budget a little bit. Um, but, um, we need to, uh, keep our level of professionalism up, and that requires a little bit more in, in wages for what I'm paying my people. Well, someday Dan will retire and someone else will take over, and that person's gonna need to learn a lot. Um, and, uh, I hope I don't lose Josiah, or I'll be pulled in a lot of hours. Um, he's, he programs, uh, everything for us, he finds crew for us, he finds announcers. Um, he's, he basically staffs all the events we do with five people. Um, so that's pretty impressive, and I don't wanna leave out kudos to our roving reporter, uh, and social media expert, Frank Cruz. So I'm sure you've all seen his stories, they're pretty heartwarming, and, uh, I'm very proud of him. So I thank you for your support.
Any questions or comments for Tom or Paul? Go ahead, Phil.
Uh, I, I just wanna say that I've been a long-term viewer, and people here might tell you that I've watched most village board meetings the last twenty years, and starting out watching it on cable and now on YouTube. I just wondered, the, the quality has improved and the ability to go there anytime. I can tell the level of equipment's gone up, and we still have Dan, so that's a plus two, so. But, uh, I've certainly noticed the, uh, the improvement in social media and all those things. I, it's really appreciated by me.
Thank you, appreciate those comments.
And I think, I'll just add, I, I think we're, our community is very lucky to have what you guys provide for us on a very, very small staff, and the, um, the quality of what you guys provide is phenomenal, so thank you for that. Anybody else? All right. Yeah, ditto to you, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can go to four C, which is public comment, is part of the agenda, allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including i- items both on and off the agenda. Anybody, I don't see anyone. Okay. All right, we can go to five, which is a approval of vouchers in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty and fourteen cents. If we get a motion a second, we'll get it on the table. Uh, Phil and Derek? All right, any, any of us left here have any questions? I didn't see any myself. Anybody have anything, you know, questions? All right. Not seeing any, so Candy, you wanna take a?
Yep. Jacobson?
Yes.
Van Campin?
Yes.
Glush?
Yes.
And Bilow?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we did the consent agenda, so we're at seven, which is report of committees. Uh, eight is unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Eight A is hiring Leann Rhodes for the community services coordinator position. I think, Martin, if I, you had a memo, you have a memo in there for us? Or, I'm sorry, it was Elise, it's been a while, day or two.
Unplug anything over here.
Yeah, do you wanna say anything, Elise?
Uh, sure, um, pleased to recommend Leann Rhodes for our community services coordinator position, which is a brand new position, we've talked about a couple times, but a position that we hope will, um, take over our park reservation system, create a fee structure for, um, for reservations in our parks and facilities, serve as a bridge to build relationships with the village, um, and the community, as well as, um, helping out kind of Village Hall with, um, special events, helping out up front, um, helping with elections, um, tax collection, things like that. But it'll probably evolve as time goes forward, we'll, we'll start with her, her growing list of things and see where her interest lies. But she's a village resident, has family in the area, has lived here quite a long time, so she's excited to be, um, working a little closer to home and serving her hometown as well.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a, a motion a second, then we can have discussions? So, all right, so Phil and Jenna, any, anybody have any questions or for Elise? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, thank you, Elise. Uh, we'll go to, to eight B, which is ordinance number twenty-two seventeen, ordinance creating section one point one-six of the Oregon Municipal Code regarding the creation of the ad hoc public art committee. Uh, staff is recommending approval. I, I do have one, would like to talk to the other board members, I do have one suggested change. Since, since last week, I was able to talk to fourteen street, fourteen south artists. Um, and, and, and this, this is in regard to the village requirement, being a village resident. They, they only have, they have one member that's a village resident. Um, and so I'd, I'd like us to at least have a discussion about possibly opening up a couple of those for outside the village. And I understand that's village money. We have other, other committees where some members are outside of the village. And I, and I, I guess I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is, is that expertise not only in the village, but outside the village? So I, I'd like to have some discussion potentially about opening up. I was thinking, um, my suggestion would be that we have, uh, at least I was thinking, my suggestion would be that we have at least four of the members, plus the village board member would be a village resident. And then two, two other ones would be open. But it, it could depend on the applications, they could all be village residents. It just depends on what we, what we get for applications. But I'm just thinking, I just wanted to make it a little bit more broader, kind of like what we did with Dane County, we added Rock and we added Green County. Just, just so we, I think have a, are able to have a really good program. That's, that's my, my thought. Others? Jenna, what do you, because you, you wanted the village residents.
I remain committed to, as I said previously, that I think we need to be looking within the village first. And if for some reason we're not able to find folks that are interested in being a part of the committee, that have the desired background, then, then we can open it up. But I think that we have a lot of artists in, within the village. They are maybe associated with Fourteenth South artists, but they are artists and they are in the village and they have the expertise that we're looking for. And I think we should give them an opportunity first before we look at opening it up.
I agree with that, you know, in principle, I just wonder about process. I mean, do we, do we set a timeframe and then if we don't get enough people, would we then give the, the staff or whatever permission to go outside? Or is that, do you want to incorporate it in the language or see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do, did we incorporate anything in the language?
Yeah.
Having that issue with the DEI committee?
It says you have to be, everyone has to be in the village, all members shall be residents of the village.
Oh, I guess my question was, because we had, previously when we were looking for members for the DEI committee, there was, we were, we were wanting to make sure that we had enough folks within the village applying first. And I know there were some extensions offered and I, I was curious what the language of that particular ordinance was.
We, we never got to the point where we changed the language for non-residents. It was always residents and then we put it out, I think twice for applications. And then eventually we got enough residents and that was where it landed.
Uh, I'm not really sure.
I guess I would say, why don't we try that then? I mean, it worked with this other committee.
You're, you're saying Jenna, just keep it all village residents?
Try it as it is.
See?
And then if, again, if it doesn't work, then, you know, we, we'll be monitoring it and then we can go forward.
So then they would just report back to us that they're unable to fill it and then we give them permission to go outside?
Yeah, I believe that's how the, the conversations around the DEI committee works, isn't that correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
What about the, do we need to change the language on this then to reflect that or no?
I think you could leave it the same right now.
Okay.
We didn't get enough members, we can just do an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay.
That's all enough.
Yeah, Derek?
I agree with Jenna in principle that all members should be residents of the village. My concern though is, starting this out from the get-go is the time limitations within the grant. Funds themselves, if we need to kind of get this ball rolling, where does that put us? If we have to then reopen this up for more applications? And what kind of timeline that puts us on for spending the grant funds that we have? So I guess I would be a little bit more in favor of just ensuring that a majority of the folks on this are village residents for now. And then possibly in the future, if we find that we have a, a lot of interest in this, bring it back to all village residents. Just because we do have the, I guess, depending on the number of applications, we as a board have a, have the option to look through those as they come before us and say, no, you're not a village resident. We have other applicants that were village residents, I'd rather go that direction. So I, I guess, given the time constraints on the grant program, I'd be more in favor of just amending the language now.
I mean, I, I, I get that, I get the village, the village resident thing. I, I, I just, I just think that there's some other expertise out there that I, I don't want us to, to not be able to tap into. But, I mean, if we said at least four of the members have to be village board members, they could all be village board members. Because we could get, we could get six really good applications from just village board members. Village residents, sorry.
Yeah.
But I just, I just don't want to cut off the, the, the outside potential members. But, I mean, we can try the, the seven, we'll see what we get. And if we have to come back, we'll come back, I guess. Martin? Yeah. I think, Martin, so if we approve this today, we can, we can do this soon, we can get this out soon for the application?
Yep, we can do it right away.
All right. I mean, the other thing is, what we could do is, I think when I wrote the, the policy, we can always, the committee can always invite other people from outside the village to the, for, you know, information or whatever to help, help the committee too. So that, that's another way to sort of supplement that.
It'll be a public meeting, so anybody can attend.
Yeah.
Whether there are no judges or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about for like the jurying process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Potentially inviting folks from the county and current county.
Right, some, some folks who have done, done that or have been part of it, so I, I guess. Yeah, I, I'm okay, we, we can leave it for now, we'll see, it'll go out. I, I think it's, I think, I, my guess is we're gonna get a lot of applications, so.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, so let's try it and see what happens, we can always modify it if we need to, so. So, well, I guess we'll need a motion.
Move to approve.
Just leave it the way it is, yeah. All right, Phil and then?
I'll second.
Jenna, okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay, thank you. All right, then we're on to eight C, which is review organizational logo concepts. That was in our packet too, there are several of them. Do we want to open it up, I don't know what people thought?
I'm hoping the staff has just died to have one of them.
Elise, can you bring, can you bring them up?
Yeah, so I can just kind of explain the process and if you'd like, I can sort of scroll through what we have and then what our recommend, or our comments were back to Orange Whip and some of the designs. But we wanted to just hit pause and check in with everybody before making, you know, any final decisions or seeing if we wanted to go in a different direction. So we've had a great experience this summer working with Orange Whip, creating, first created a batch of eleven logos. We went through as department heads, gave some feedback, kind of wanted to Franken sign some fonts from one and some images from another and come up with some different options. So he provided another round of revisions with four updated concepts. And then also showing what that might look like on printed material, on a T-shirt, on a coffee mug, things like that, just to sort of picture it and scale of those items. So we do have the ability for one more design concept included in what we've already committed to pay for. But any additional concepts will be an additional price, just wanted, just wanted to clarify that. So I'll zoom out a little bit. So these are the concepts we received back in early July. So a couple have sort of a Tin Man motif with different logo options, different decorations around circle. And then several different options that were more a play on an O for Oregon. So I know I'm kind of going through these quickly, but they were in the packet. So hopefully you guys got a chance to look through these. So these were suggestions for the first round. And then our suggestions were we, we liked the Tin Man motif, we thought it was a little bit more unique than just having an O. A lot of companies, I think, use that circle and it just looked a little bit more unique. And then we liked some of the fonts from a few of the designs, so we passed those comments forward. So these are the four concepts. This is an optional inclusion, but he has the ON in Oregon as a different color, orange, that's sort of a play on, on Wisconsin. It doesn't have to be different colors, it could be all one orange. But this is one with obviously the, the Tin Man top inside of the O, kind of the.
You know, Elise, I did not get that on Wisconsin thing.
You didn't see that?
I wondered why they were two different oranges, might so.
So that's an optional thing, can be easily changed. This is another one with more of the, the Tin Man, that's sort of a sunburst. Kind of a little bit of a play on the Memorial Union Chairs that are made here in town and more centered over the village. This is kind of one of those O's, looks a little bit like a lunar eclipse to me, but we have the Tin Man here. And then this is sort of back in that more of a floral motif around the Tin Man. So he did take these four and I'll zoom in a little bit here. Showed us what that may look like on our sign that's right out front, on a T-shirt, on a mug. There's first one, again, this is the second one. There's the eclipse one and then more of that floral design. So I think we've showed these four to the department heads. I don't know if we had one in particular that we, we didn't take a vote or anything, but we decided just to hit pause here. But would love to hear some feedback or if you'd like to wait till the other board members are here before we make a decision. We're not in a huge rush, we're not, you know, planning our move until probably March or April. So we will still have time to get sign order and made, business cards printed, et cetera. But if you have any feedback on direction or if you want to go back to square one, that would be helpful. Otherwise, we can maybe bring this up again in October when everyone's back together.
So Elise, I'll give you my, my feedback, to be honest, I, I like the first one, one A, the first one you showed. I, I, and I, I liked the little Tin Man on there, I mean, that, it, it is a part of our iconic history. I like this one because it's kind of simple, easy to read. And then my second, my second choice was, is kind of similar, but, and thank you for the on Wisconsin, which I didn't get, which was concept twelve, which is, is kind of interesting. So it's got, it's still simple, it's got the Tin Man, it's got the on Wisconsin thing. So those are the two that kind of, I mean, I like logos that are pretty simple. So that was my, my two that stood out. Other, Jenna, what do you got?
Oh, I was, I hadn't thought about this, but Elise liked your idea of waiting till October when the rest of the board members were there. Mostly because as I'm listening to your explanation, I was like, wow, I picked ones that were way different than what the department has liked.
Well, which ones do you like, Jenna, let's see?
So I liked ten A and three A the most and I liked the font of one A to go with them. Those were the, the two that I picked. I don't know, I'm not a design person by any means, so please don't take that as any sort of expertise.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jenna, one A, I like the font too, it's a pretty clean, nice clean font.
Yeah, and to your point, I did not get the on.
I didn't get.
I didn't, honestly, I didn't notice on my, on my computer, I didn't even notice.
Yeah, it probably didn't show up, so.
I was, I was just wondering why there were two colors.
Noticeable, it was just easier to have one shade if we are doing, you know, T-shirts or something, it's just one color orange or two, two colors total.
Yeah, either make the contrast more, yeah, make a bigger contrast or just go with a few colors.
All right. So Derek or Phil, your thoughts?
I'm looking at thirteen, is there, is there an equivalent number in the, in the rest of the group? Yeah, thirteen, no?
Thirteen was a variation, um, sorry. Concept one, it's the same Tin Man, it's the different font. So rather than this more block font and the circle Tin Man, it was the circle kind of centered over the logo and then Oregon, a lot bigger, we're just using different fonts here, so.
I'm looking at thirteen where they have the sign and the. I'm not a big fan of incorporating a letter in the, you know, using stylized O. That's just my opinion. The other reason I, the other thing I would hesitate personally is the two different colors of orange, which I think is going to be more people will ask you what's wrong with the sign. And what it means.
Yeah, yeah, I had, I had to sit with it for a couple of days, I'm like, I think those are different colors. And I asked him, I said, is this kind of an on Wisconsin play? He said, yeah, I thought I would throw that in there, but that's, again, easily changed, so.
But that, that would be my comment, is, is, just going back to the single color and I don't really like the incorporating the, the O into the logo. I'm just not a big fan of that.
But you like thirteen or something?
Thirteen is, I think, and really I'm looking at it from the standpoint of someone who used to be in the sign business. And I think it's be, it's, it's nice to be able to see it, that rendition, because then you can see whether you'll actually be able to read it. As well as, at least for, I think, many Oregon residents will be able to make out that, that is the Tin Man in the logo. If we start doing something like fifteen with the design around it or let's see the other one that has something like that. Or two A, where they have the design around it. I think once you get that reduced down to sign that it might be on the sign, that's going to be really muddy. Trying to figure out just what's that blob up there on the sign.
Yeah, definitely a little bit more going on here.
Yeah, yeah, that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Derek, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I'm gonna go a little different, different direction here. I agree with Jenna that we should be waiting for the other board members to chime in on this decision, I guess. And I was a little disappointed that this is, Mr. Head is the Orange Whip Company, basically, it's his business. I guess, given some of his recent social media posts, calling Oregon a bizarre world, I would like a little clarification from him on his comments there, because I do have, take issue with anyone designing the logo that does have a disdain for the village itself. So I guess I'd like a little bit of clarification from him on that, if it was him, if it wasn't, before moving forward. That said, I don't really want to, in my hearing from the village at large at this, a lot of the question, or when I asked what people thought about the idea of getting a new logo, a lot of what I heard is, why do we need a new logo? We're here, we've allocated, or we've spent the money on it. I guess I'd like the village to have a little bit more of a say in it. I would almost recommend an informal voting system, throw a ballot box at the library, the senior center, to see what the actual village wants, as opposed to this becoming just a village board decision ultimately. I agree with Phil that under the Oregon sign, it should be all one, one color orange, because otherwise you are just going to get more questions or what's wrong with your sign than what it's worth. But if we are able to get the designer here to kind of clarify his position on the village before we move forward with that, I guess that would be my request.
Yeah, we'll, we'll share, Bob wasn't able to be here tonight due to an illness. But he, if we have a set of future meetings, I'll certainly let him know and see if he could attend in person. Thank you for all your feedback. And as we mentioned before, certainly there's the village, the organization, and then there's the village, the community, which reaches beyond municipal boundaries. So perhaps that's maybe for some of the misunderstandings between villages, the community versus Village Hall.
Perhaps, but I'd like the clarification.
Okay. All right.
I'll see if we can get this on a future agenda, check his availability and then we'll pick it up when we can all be present and make a plan to move forward.
Okay, sounds good.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I'm aware, Derek, of judging a business by potentially their political or, or other attitudes. We, we, we went out and asked someone to bid on this project and we did not make any qualifications about what their particular feelings about this, that, or the other thing. We asked them if their business was capable of fulfilling this request. They indicated so and provided renditions as we see. I'm just, I'm very wary of starting to grill. I'm just, I'm very wary of starting to grill village vendors about their feelings on things other than what we've asked them to do.
All right, so we'll add it to a future agenda when most, all of us are back, okay? All right, let's, let's go to nine, which is new business, items offered discussion, possible action. Nine A is consider director of community development proposal for zoning text amendments. Elise?
I'm back.
You're up, yeah?
So this is a long time coming, but I've finally worked with our consultant from Vandewell to consolidate a, and create a list of proposed amendments to our zoning code that will help address a lot of different issues, everything from housing to sustainability and also help us kind of catch up with some of the state laws that have changed to bring us more into compliance and clear up a lot of gray area. So there are three major groups that I've categorized these into, short-term changes, very simple cleanup things, low-hanging fruit, shouldn't have a whole lot of discussion, more just modernizing our code, which was written in 2006 and a lot has happened since then. The second are more midterm changes that should require a policy decision and I think definitely those I would recommend kind of sitting on. We can take them in chunks, but perhaps discussing when everyone, again, is here and I can categorize them more into housing-related changes or property maintenance-related changes, other, other topics that deserve a little bit more time and discussion and some more background information. And then the longer-term changes are things that make sense, I think, to address after we go through our comprehensive plan update in 2023. So I also have not shared these with our planning commission yet, this particular list. They know some of these things that are on here, but I would like to share this at their October 6 meeting, get some feedback from them on what they like to pursue or anything that, you know, they'd like to move forward with right away, bring that back to the board. Again, when we've got everybody here, we can kind of move forward. But the short-term changes, again, is a lot of things that are just added up on clarifying things on fencing, chickens and beekeeping has been out there for a very long time. I know we have chickens in town, but it's all very uncertain about how many you can have and where they can be flying around, so want to clean that up. Other things that have just changed since, you know, alternative energy production with wind and solar, that wasn't really something that was considered or as common in 2006 when our code was written, so bringing some of those changes in. Again, you can kind of see what the midterm changes, it's a lot of land use type discussions and about how we want to treat mobile homes, how we want to treat things like storage units, Airbnbs, property maintenance, that's something we haven't really addressed before in terms of having an ordinance that requires people to keep up with their roofing, siding, those type of property maintenance concerns. And then, yeah, these longer-term changes. So not necessarily looking for any direction tonight. I think I'd like to bring this to the planning commission again in October and then maybe at our later October meeting, we could at least agree to perhaps move forward with the short-term list. I can start working on some of those text amendments and then get a sense from you all about these policy decision midterm type changes, which ones you want to discuss further. And then, again, going into those deeper conversations probably later in the fall before we start coming up with draft language for those.
Okay, does it sound, yeah, Jenna?
I was really excited to see this, not just because of the chicken issue, but specifically that's been something I've been talking about since 2017. So yay to see some movement on that, but thank you. This, it was, looked like a pretty comprehensive list of not only things that we've talked about over the years here, but I'm sure just changes naturally that you've come across. So thank you for putting that together and it's a good idea.
All right, so, sound good, we'll, we'll see it again?
Makes sense for, to go to the planning commission first. Clearly they have more expertise on a lot of this stuff, at least I do, so that makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. All right, Elise, good?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, 9B, we can go to future agenda items. This item gives board members opportunity to place items on, place items and new, new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody have anything here tonight that they want to add to the future agenda? Okay, not seen any. We'll go to 10, reporter village officers. 10A is, is Martin's report, which is in our packet. I don't know if anybody's got any questions for, for Martin. 10B, we'll go to police chief's report on the K-9 Gulf outing. Chief, if you want to say anything, it's, it sounds like it was a good, a good, good turnout and good outing.
Yeah, it's actually one of our, our best fundraisers and we did very well. I, I thought trustee Peterson brought up a great question, you know, after seeing what we had spent, but even after that, we were, we walked away with quite the gained amount. But also I just wanted to make it a little bit more exciting. In the packet I included a photograph of Archie, so Archie's in there now, he's off at training.
Okay, very good, okay. All right, any questions for chief on that one? All right. 10, 10C is finance director, report on billing permits, impact fees, connection fees. Collected ending August 2022, that was in the packet. Lisa's not here, but may I have any questions on that, it was pretty self-explanatory? Okay. 10D, library director, report on status of library project.
I covered most of this information at our last meeting, but I did want to just point you to the next steps part of the memo, which talks about the MOU, what it, what it says happens next. So we have done step seven, which is publicly bid as required by law. So those bids are due back September 29th. And then following that, step eight has a couple of things that you'll be needing to discuss at the October 3 meeting. Assuming that we have a bid that fits the project budget, we would be able to award the contract following those things. The library board will be having a special meeting the night after your, your village board meeting on the 3rd to follow up on any actions appropriate. We will be covering this at your October 3 meeting. Just one note that because of the timing of the bids, we will have all that information in your October 3 packet, but it will be added on the Thursday after the bid opening so that you have all weekend to look at it. It just won't be necessarily in the original packet when it goes out on Wednesday. So you don't, that, that will be included, it'll just be amended a day or two later.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. 10E is village department head, staff, consultant, Rachel or Elise, anybody have anything? Chief, Lauren, nothing? Okay, all right. We'll go to F, village board comments, anybody have anything? All right. 11, announcements miscellaneous business, items offered discussion. 10A, upcoming meetings and events, that was in our packet too, to get stuff in our calendar. Otherwise, we'll take 12, we'll take an adjournment. Jenna?
Yeah.
And Derek, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, okay, we're done.